I'll call the North Liberty Planning Commission meeting for September to order. Start with the roll call.
Willer?
Here.
Genizer?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Bathke?
Here.
Heisler?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Bathke, second by Willer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. All right, public hearing on zoning map amendment. Request of Corridor Media Properties LLC for zoning map amendment. Rezoning on property owned by Corridor Media Properties LLC on approximately 1.53 acres from ORP Office and Research Park District to C3 Higher Intensity Commercial District on property located at 2345 Landon Road. Staff presentation.
Okay, so this is a request to, I think, have a little bit more flexibility for tenant spaces within the building. Here's an aerial shows the property. This is one of three properties left that is still zoned Office Research Park. As a reminder, I think Office Research Park is kind of a vision for office and research facilities and post-COVID, that's really, really starting to see a decline of those. So, we introduced the C3 zoning several years ago and encouraged some of the properties along this corridor to rezone, several have. And then you see three being Green State, the GEICO, and then this building, still with the Office Research Park. So, your zoning map on the left, kind of gives you an idea of what the area is starting to look like. And on the right, it's urban high intensity on the future land use maps. So the zoning would be consistent with future land use. We had a virtual Good Neighbor meeting on the 19th. Just the property owner and myself chit-chatting for about 10 minutes and then we called the meeting because no one attended. So, we don't have any formal objections to the request. And so we do have one finding that the rezoning to C3 would achieve consistency with the approval standards that we've outlined in the staff report, and we recommend you accept that listed finding for the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval. I do see John Loman in the audience who represents the ownership, if you have any questions for him.
Would you like to make a presentation? Okay. Any public comments? Not seeing any public comments, questions or comments from the commission?
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments, we could entertain a motion recommended to council.
I move that the Planning Commission accepts the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Willer, second by Heiser. Is this a roll call?
Yep.
Okay.
Ward?
Here.
Aye.
Sorry. Heyern?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Willer?
Aye.
Genizer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to public hearing on ordinance. Request to the city of North Liberty for an ordinance amending chapters 165, 167, 168, 169, and 180 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances, including regulations for preliminary site plans, certificates of zoning compliance, definitions, residential district dimensional standards, uses listed in the use matrix, uses defined in use standards, off-street vehicle parking requirements, parking lot landscaping, fences and walls, permitted encroachments into required yards, design standards, and required improvements for subdivisions.
Okay, so I've been a one-person wrecking crew on amending zoning ordinance over the past several years. It's been a while since I've brought something forward to you, so it's been tough to be patient. So, a lot of times I just, you know, I reorganized the zoning code a couple of years ago, and I think the benefits from that reorganization help some things like we'll talk about tonight, like accessory dwelling units. It makes it a lot easier to add uses, amend uses. And so I think that effort has paid off. As I go through the zoning code, dealing with developments, working with developers and things like that, I always try and keep an open ear to things that are changing, to try and be flexible, what that means, right? Just trying to keep an eye on what the big picture is, what we're trying to do, right? And obviously, we're trying to protect public health and welfare, right? But I think we have a standard for what our community looks like, and I think if things would like to change and they fit with that community standard, bring it on, let's do it. And I think flexibility is ultimately the key. So, I keep a little parking lot and I just make little notes about things to change and when I'm ready, I just kind of pile those things on. I see William and Jeff in the audience, probably more so William, but Jeff too, have been talking to us for a couple of years now about accessory dwelling units. And been pretty tenacious, and I do appreciate that. I think really a turning point for us is, really just kind of came in and laid it out of, and you know, I kind of pushed back a little bit and said, hey, I kind of view things like, how many, how many times are people calling me and saying, can I, I want an accessory dwelling unit, can I do it in the code? And I don't get that call a lot, but when I sat down and talked with them, they said, this isn't the magic bullet, but it is one thing to address, you know, the housing crisis needs, kind of. And that really resonated with me, okay? It's not, it's not one thing, you know, and there's other things that we've done, right? When I talked about the zoning code amendment, we now allow for multifamily in almost, I think, all of the commercial districts. We're starting to see that come around, people building multifamily in those districts and just trying to relax those, and that helps. That's another option of promoting housing. So, it's really these, a bunch of different things, I think, that really tackle the underlying problem. And so, I'm just going to summarize some of the changes, and I can talk about these. So, first was modification to preliminary site plans. When people bring preliminary site plans to you, it's conceptual in nature, and we should expect them to change. The standard when I got here was, I call it the magic wand standard, where it said, well, the code official, which is me, can basically agree to changes if they're generally, you know, consistent with the approved site plan. And I didn't like that at all, so I thought we should have standards of, you know, it should be a percentage of setback, a percentage of the density, to limit the liability for me, and like I said, I'm not waving a magic wand. I just think to relax that a little bit, right? If they don't meet the standards for a change, it comes back through this process. And if it generally meets, I think, within those standards, generally what was approved, I think that's fine. So, I put it in there in the code, just relaxing that a little bit. We're rewriting the section on zoning certificates of compliance, and the zoning certificate of compliance is like if a new business or a change of business comes into a new, let's say, a commercial space. Like, it was a restaurant, and now it's going to be an office or something like that. We require a zoning certificate. What we do is ensure that the use is, meets what the requirements are for zoning, that it's basically allowed in that zoning. They have their required parking and things like that. We certainly don't want somebody to get into a building and then realize once they're already did their tenant up, that, and stuff like that, that they've got a zoning problem. And so really, it's just trying to protect people upfront. We often think too, that when people get into new spaces, they're in the mode of doing some tenant space improvements, which may or may not necessitate building permits and things like that. So, we're really just trying to be a little bit more proactive and talk to people way upfront in the early of the process. Talk to them if they're making modifications, you just talk to the building department and things like that. Deleting outdated definitions, you know, interestingly, we had accessory living quarters defined in the code. It was only in the definition section, and the reason for that is very clear to me, it's because we were trying to define it to say you couldn't do it. And that's really what happened. And we define kitchen in there, again, trying to define things to prohibit people from doing things we didn't want to do. So there was really no reason for those definitions anymore. I made a lot of modifications to residential design dimensional standards. The big one is in like RM districts, I'm starting to see more people, and it's not that uncommon, when you have a row of townhouses, to be able to be on individual lots. Our code does not allow that right now. And the problem that we're seeing with people is they're not able to get traditional lending because of that. They're having to go through arms and things like that. So, this is basically allowing somebody to, like, you could have your own yard, it's not necessarily always have to be a condo. You can have your own backyard that's 20 feet wide and a little bit longer. So I had to do things like, you know, townhouses, you know, before, and if you subdivide, relaxed some of the setbacks in certain circumstances, like for instance, a 25-foot front yard setback is really, the only reason you need a 25-foot front yard setback is because of a car, right? If you start going down to 20 feet, start having bumper overhangs and things like that. Some of the townhouses that we see on public streets, or most of them actually, don't have the garage facing the public street because we don't allow them to have driveways on public streets. It made sense to relax the front yard setback in that instance, be down to 20 feet. Now, and so if you do have a front-facing garage or something like that, then the setback steps up to 20. So it was like, things like that, again, things I'm talking to developers about of, gee, I wish we had a little bit more flexibility. So, I attacked it that way. The big one that, and again, I'm sure William and Jeff are going to want to talk to about is accessory dwelling unit. And so, this is a new use. It's a permitted use in the RS districts. So anybody that has an RS district could have an accessory dwelling unit. You don't need a conditional use or rezoning or anything like that, it's allowed by right. If your homeowners association says that you can't have one, I know in our, where I live, we couldn't have this, this doesn't supersede that regulation. So, we don't necessarily track which ones do or don't, but it doesn't supersede that requirement. I was able to hold off William quite a bit, I said, I want to see what Iowa City does. And he said, all right, called my bluff, and said, okay, Iowa City approved it, now it's your turn. It was like, all right. So we waited to see what they did, took a look at what their ordinance, Johnson County has approved one as well. So, we did have some models out there, so we looked at what these jurisdictions had. You can have accessory dwelling units a couple of different ways, you can have it internal, like it's part of your structure, but it's, you've got an exterior entrance, so it's separate. Now if I had like a mother-in-law quarter in my house now, and you could walk down the stairs or something like that, that's still a house. This is where you've got it completely walled off, like a separate unit, you've got an exterior door to it. And then secondly, you could have one that's a detached accessory building. You'll see some size step-ups. Those align exactly with what we currently allow for detached garages. And so I figured, if you can have that size for a detached garage, why couldn't you do it for accessory dwelling unit? It is exactly the same. And I had to write some things like, well, okay, if you've got an accessory dwelling unit, then you can't have, you know, another 850 square foot garage, you kind of get one or the other. And, you know, when you start getting into things like that, that's to really just limit the scale of things on your property. So we did that. I know, I included in the packet an email from William, and he disagreed with, or he suggested that we loosen up some of the standards we have for design for accessory buildings. I think we have that consistently throughout the code, I'll let him speak to that, but I did think about that, I felt that it, you know, I do get concerned, you can see these things on Amazon and things like that, or shipping container or something like that, it comes, and I just didn't think that fit with our community standard. And so it wasn't terribly onerous about exactly what it needs to be, it just needed to be compatible with, with kind of the house on it, to make it look, I think, compatible with the house in the neighborhood. I added some flexibility to required trees, so if you, like a commercial parking lot, you have to have, you can have a maximum of 14 parking spaces, and you have to have a tree, like an island. That was something new, I implemented what I've seen a couple of times where people are like, you know, I'd really like, and we really like to have protected walkways, and that makes sense, we just started to have an island because you've got less of a distance for the public to walk through a parking lot. So it made sense for me to say, okay, you don't have to put a tree in that island if you put a connected pedestrian walkway, or if you want to do like an outdoor seating area, that made perfect sense to me. And again, trying to keep that code flexible. Reintroducing some design standards for fences, I accidentally took this out of the code when I made the amendment a couple of years ago, and this is like the code that says the good side's supposed to face your neighbor. That was, that was an oops, and I knew it wouldn't be perfect, and that was one of them, like, oh, I did not mean to do that. Updating encroachments into required yards. This was just pretty straightforward, but again, some of the things we're seeing, and I think this came about because we had a walkway, and I think it just picked three feet because that's what driveways were. Again, before, the code never even dealt with this. We had one that we looked at that we felt one foot to the property line was good, and the one foot is just to make sure somebody isn't putting it right on the property line because who knows exactly where your property line is, it just gives you a little bit of space there. And then the last one is actually in the subdivision code, it's removing the requirement for reimbursement for upsizing sanitary sewer mains. When we deal with subdivisions, we may ask them to upsize their sewer main. Interestingly, this requirement is not in the portion for upsizing water mains, and we thought there isn't, we didn't understand why there is an inconsistency there. This isn't to say that the city can't negotiate with the developers. What happens with the development is, we ask for some things, and then we negotiate in the developer's agreement, any reimbursements, and that goes to city council. This isn't saying that we would never upsize, we would never reimburse somebody for an upsizing, we just didn't want the requirement compelling us to do so, especially if it made sense for, I mean, it's to facilitate future development down the line. So, I think that's long-windedly all of it. So if you want me to delve, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to, again, public input that we talked about. Also should mention Jessica and Dino, she was great too. Again, we did one finding, we do have approval standards for zoning code amendments, and so we do recommend that you accept that listed finding and forward the ordinance amendment to the city council with recommendation for approval.
Okay. This, this motion encompass all of them, or do we have one for each?
Yep. Unless you want to pull, no, all of it, yep, unless you wanted to pull something out, yep.
I think we'll get to that, but at this point, we'll open the Florida public comment.
My name is William Gorman, and I'm chair of the Housing Action Team of the Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging Policy Board. Nice, long title, isn't it? We are pleased that the staff have drafted and that you're considering draft code for accessory dwelling units. We very much appreciate Ryan's willingness to listen over the past several years. The reality is that Iowa needs more housing, and they especially need affordable housing. It's more affordable for young couples, single working adults, parents with small children, and seniors. In order for housing to be more affordable, we need smaller residences. The cost to purchase or rent smaller residences is less. Maintaining them is less, heating and cooling them is less. Thus, affordable dwelling units are one strategy for achievable housing. It's not a panacea, but it's an option. We do support most of the draft language, we understand the requirement for owner occupancy, we believe the stair-step approach for the size of the ADU tailored to the lot size is reasonable. However, we're just a bit disappointed that the current draft for allowed districts for ADUs has now been reduced to just RS, and no longer will allow them in RD districts. So we ask you to think about that. We would like to have the chance for ADUs in as many residential districts as possible. We also ask you to consider eliminating the requirement that ADUs must match the primary residence in style, exterior, building materials, colors, and architectural elements, and that's the phrase that's in the draft you have. There's two reasons for that concern. First, exterior building materials and colors may no longer be available to match the primary residence. I had that in my own house, we did a kind of an addition, and we couldn't find siding to match. I mean, we took six months to find, we had to go out of state to try to find something, and finally a contractor in a different state found it in their garage, some additional siding to match, but that can become a real problem. The requirement is also likely to drive up the cost to the homeowner, because it minimizes their options. Second, for detached ADUs, there are now well-built manufacturing ADUs that can be delivered to the building site that are more cost-effective for homeowners. And I'm not talking about containers, I'm talking about very attractive options for accessory dwelling units. But it'd be very difficult for those to match the primary residence, because most of those companies doing that only have two, three, or four options. And frequently, not only does the color not going to match, but the material is not going to match, but yet they're high quality. So this requirement will eliminate a cost-effective option for homeowners for a detached accessory dwelling unit. Therefore, at a minimum, we hope you will drop this requirement at a minimum for detached ADUs, or perhaps have some conditional use part to it, where the homeowner would have to bring a drawing of that detached ADU for the city to look at, to see that it, you know, it's not a container, it's not something that's just, would be obnoxious and not appreciated by, you know, the homeowners in that area. So thank you for consideration, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Unbiased opinions, Jeff lives in the greatest neighborhood in North Liberty, so.
It's true.
We have many of them, but.
There are many. I'm Jeff Kelbach, I'm a resident of North Liberty, as Ryan said, and I'm also a staff liaison with the Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging, so a little bit biased on this as well, but just from my own personal opinion as a homeowner in town, I just, I want to have that opportunity that if I have a loved one that I need to live close by, instead of having to go into something that could cost a lot more that they may not want to live at, I think that this, in this instance, that becomes a much more affordable option. I mean, we look at things like assisted living being $7,000, $8,000 a month. I know that, you know, building an ADU isn't exactly a cheap endeavor, but when you take a look at that, if you have somebody there for two years, I mean, they very well could be paying for that, and probably pay for a decent accessory dwelling unit. I just know that older adults may want to have that option as well, where they may be able to move into the accessory dwelling unit, have their younger family move into town, and this may be a way for them to help out that family, but also have separation. So I just look at this as something that's a really great opportunity for homeowners in the area, and I know Ryan's right, there are a lot of, you know, HOAs, and that's going to have to be something that first has to be allowed in the city for us to be able to cross that bridge with some of those HOAs to see if we can do something there, but I just think it's a really great option, and I hope you guys will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing done, I will open it up to comments, questions from the commission.
I'd first like to disclose that I also am a member of the policy board that William referenced, and Jeff is on, and I've been a full proponent of this ADU revision. I talked to Russ, man, it's been a couple of years, hasn't it? So I'm very happy about the proposal. I would like to talk about, it's Section 6B3, I believe, the ADU shall have a consistent architectural style, as the primary dwelling is defined by a compatible exterior building materials and colors and architectural elements, that's what Bill referenced. I'd love to see, or otherwise approved by city officials. I know you don't want it dumped on you, Russ, because you need to have some measurement of what is or is not acceptable, but I wanted to fully disclose where my opinion comes from first, that I'm part of the commission, wholeheartedly love this, but I would love to see at minimum a tweak to also allow something, but I want to talk about it.
Sure, but I don't want to cut you off, Jesse, but Russ, maybe this is a good opportunity to talk about the mechanisms for permitting, or how this, you know, how does this process look if somebody wants to add one of these?
Right, they come in and get a building permit, and that's it. So there is a design review that happens at the staff level. We perform a design review right now for single-family homes and things like that. I was careful in choosing my words, and so, you know, ADU shall have a consistent architectural style as the primary building, and this is for both detached and attached, is defined as, and I use the word compatible exterior building materials, it doesn't, doesn't say exact, and that was intentional.
You meant for them to be broad?
Yes.
Good.
It just means it has to be compatible. So there, again, I tried as far away as I could get from having that, and that's why I didn't want to say, or as, you know, approved by staff, because that, I think that's dangerous to give somebody like me or anybody some power, right? It's just, I'm trying to build this to not, if I could write it, I think I use, phrase for grant users, these sometimes bright lines are better, just because the public understands a little bit more, I think, and so, that's, understanding that comment, and I knew it was coming, and William's very open about it, I appreciate that. So that's how I define that. I think it would prevent like a metal building, and some of those things we're trying to get around, and so that was my answer. He did mention, I failed, the original draft I had sent him also permitted them in RD districts, which is our zero lot line districts. We talked about that internally, and then we just, we just thought, you know, why not start with RS? And if we feel like we can rate him to, hey, this is really successful, it's great, we can always, like, right, I've been in front of you many, many times, we can come back and say, okay, let's introduce it to the RD. The lots are smaller, obviously, for the RDs, and you're closer to your neighbors, and we thought, you know, theoretically, you could have two of these right next to each other, you could have that in RS too, so I'll be upfront about that. And the owner occupancy was one that we picked, right? So we just didn't want this, we don't have this big problem in North Liberty, but we didn't want it to be as something that, you know, I own investment property, and this is an opportunity, and I'm going to build another ADU for rental. No, you've got to live in one of those units. Now, like, there's a point in my life where I'm going to downsize when the kids move out, right? Could be an opportunity to say, hey, I don't want to sell, I could, I could move into the ADU and then rent a bigger house, that would be legit. You could also, ADU could be a home office, I could build an office in the back that's, because we don't allow living area now in accessory buildings. This would allow you to build a home office in the backyard as a separate living unit, so.
But the ADU can't be an Airbnb or Verbo or anything like that, can it?
It can, because the state limits us on regulating short-term rentals. If, so if I live in my house and I'm permitted to have an ADU, then I think you can do, do it as a VR, VR, Verbo or Airbnb.
That said, what we're not talking about though, is city rental housing code, though, and I don't.
Yeah, you'd have to get a rental.
You'd have to get a rental permit.
Yep, you'd have to get a rental permit.
How that works, I don't, you know, I wouldn't hazard a guess at this point, but.
It basically allow, you just have to register, we have to do inspections, it doesn't prohibit it, even if you're like an Airbnb or VRBO, we require those to, after a certain number, we require those to be registered, just to make sure you have some minimum standards and fire extinguishers and things like that.
Let's be honest, we can use more of those on home football weekends, though. I mean, it's a good thing for all the markets, in my opinion.
So what percentage, you know what percentage of residential in the whole city this means with the RS districts? Is it small percentage to?
Oh, no, most of our property is zoned RS in the city. Oh, boy. I could tell you, hold on a second. Actually, I think I might have this data.
Oh, really?
Actually, it's on a different, I would, if I had to guess, I think. Actually, it's on a different, I would, if I had to guess, I think probably, I would think forty, if I remember, like forty-some percent of our property is like single-family.
Okay, that just gives me a.
Yeah.
Do these unique, or these restrictions, we're talking about the consistency in architecture, the owner occupied, are those consistent with Johnson County and Iowa City? Are they different? What do they look like? Do you know?
I don't recall offhand. Do, will?
There's consistency on owner occupancy. I'm trying to remember the difference between Iowa City and.
I know, that's where I'm.
Just trying to, I'm just wondering if we're forging ahead or following.
Johnson County did, Iowa City says the attached EDUs have to kind of match the primary residence, but detached do not. So they drew that decision, and that's.
Yeah, and with respect to the owner occup, it's, I'd love to stand up here and tell you that I invented this idea, but I'm not, right?
In with it?
No, I wish I could, no, I'm just kidding, but it's out there, and it was, it was a concern of how to respond to that of, well, just investor properties, we're going to build these, and that was one way, and I, if I recall correctly, I can't, again, I can't remember which one, one of the, like, it was like the main unit had to be owner occupied or something like that, and I didn't think that was fair. I thought, like, if I lived in an EDU, what's the difference? Like, it just, the idea is that you have some ownership stake in the property, like, whether you live in a smaller one or not, who cares?
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation.
Is there a mechanism that limits the size of the EDU?
Yes, it's in the code. And again, let's see, it is, if you're attached, then you're just subject to what setbacks are for your house, right?
If it's detached?
Yeah, if you are detached, you're allowed 850 square feet as a right. If you have a property that's half acre or .75 acres, you can go up to 1,000, and if you have exceeding three-quarters of an acre, but less than one acre, you can have 1,200, and if you have a property that's exceeding one acre, it can be 1,400. And the reason for that is that is consistent with exactly how we do detached garages, and that was a code amendment, that was one of the first code amendments I did, because we didn't allow anybody flex, you know, we don't have a lot of them, but I remember specifically, it was people that owned some property on Forever Green Road, and they had larger lots. And it was like, I, you know, and they asked me, I don't understand why I have to be limited to the 850 square feet when I've got three acres, and I, but, you know, you're right, it doesn't make sense. And so we ended up going to a scale depending on the size of your property, and I thought, well, okay, if you could have a garage that big, that's a perfect model for scaling EDUs. So that's, that's how I got to that, it just exactly matches. And then, you know, so if you, also, if you want to do combination of structures, like, okay, I've got a one-car garage and then the EDU, that's, both of those together would be limited, so, like, let's say, for instance, the 850, so you can't just start building up 15,000 square foot because you've got, you know, these two buildings, so that's how that worked.
Is that ground floor plate, or is that total, if it's two floors?
Well, I mean, it would be total, but the height limitation for detached is going to be 15 feet, so that's going to be your limiting factor on one story, essentially. I mean, I suppose you could do, I suppose you could do something with a grade change that could be, you know, you might be able to get to 15 feet that way, but it's gross floor area.
Well, I've, I've seen this helping out in Colorado in Denver, how it really helps out there where they have a, even a stronger crisis than we do here, for affordable housing.
You know, you see some of these trends, right? The tiny house trend, I, I mean, we actually, you could do tiny houses here with like a PAD, we've just never seen it. I think this one's legitimate, though. I think we're seeing it, you know, and we read a lot about it in, amongst planners and things like that. Again, it's, I don't think you're going to see a ton of EDUs overnight, it's a tool that people may be able to utilize.
And again, you thought, over time, looking at the need, eventually moving to for zero lots or other changes, that, just the fact that you're open to this, because I remember the conversation two years ago, it was a lot newer, and starting those conversations, so.
Yeah, I am, I am open to rewriting and writing over this code again until you just, and I think you, if you're not adapting this code to what current trends are, that's why you end up with these archaic codes that just like, oh, you end up making these goofball interpretations because of how codes are written, just change it. But absolutely.
I definitely appreciate the progressive attitude and openness to the conversations.
Hundred percent, and I will say, too, that the, I very much appreciate the concerns about matching exteriors. I do that as part of my day job, and I know how difficult and challenging that can be, and I have 100% confident, confidence in Russ and our staff to not be, you know, overly prohibitive or even, you know, punitive in their kind of enforcement of these things. I like the language, and I can see how maybe there's maybe some clarification that will need to be made at some point, but at this point right now, in my opinion, the perfect is the enemy of the good, and I really want to see this, I really want to see this happen because I think this is an important thing, it's a tool not only for families with aging parents, but you see it in a lot of other markets where somebody says, well, you know, I do have the means to buy a house, but man, I don't want this huge monthly payment, maybe I can rent a portion of this thing. And that's a, it's just another way to get people into, into properties, and I appreciate that it's, you know, the requirement is for owner occupancy, but if you've got the ability to rent out one portion of that property to somebody else who maybe can't or doesn't want to buy a house, then hallelujah, but it just keeps the market moving. And so that would be my two cents on EDU piece, and I, and we also have, too, I don't want to forget that we've got the rest of those code changes in this, so if anybody has any other questions beyond the EDUs, do we need to revisit any of that?
The only one I'd, we can go through these line by line if you want, I'm just.
We're in the question and answer period, I mean, at this point, if anybody has any.
Thank you, no thank you.
The only one that I will note, which was interesting, and we saw this in, come through the state law, which is always fascinating, I'll use that word loosely, the state made some changes to 414 that prohibits cities from requiring directly or indirectly cladding, exterior cladding on 12 flexes or less. A big part of our development style in the city is exterior cladding, so we had to pivot and say, to, I think we, here it is, to the maximum extent permitted by Iowa Code 414, and so we had, we had to make some of those changes. I have some personal feelings on that, I don't think the scale, right, scale, I think Dave and I have talked about this, right, on big buildings, it's a lot different, right? So think about the palestra and the Pizza Ranch going up, right? Masonry on that is a bigger deal than masonry on my house. It's just a, it looks nicer, but I think it's a scale thing, and it's, it's to help impact the large scale of buildings, and having just a metal building doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and I think that's the spirit that they were coming at, although the 12 flex, I mean, those on Yara Way, on those new 12 flex, those are two 12 flexes, and those are pretty big buildings.
Yeah, there's, again, the, maybe the intention was correct, and they did not get it written, I mean, that obviously happens all the time, particularly in our state legislature.
We seem to have had a, had a season of it lately.
The inadvertent, you know, the, the ideas may be correct, but the, you know.
It is what it is, and you just adapt it.
You're right, it is what it is, and I think, you know, the market, we assume anyway, the market will dictate some of those things as well, right, and kind of let it, you know, work its magic, you know, to the extent that we can.
Yeah, when the state passed that law, I had to read it three times, like, what?
Yeah, and I think, if I remember correctly, there are some mechanisms, like, there are some mechanisms, that's why we wrote to the maximum extent permitted by law, because there are some mechanism by which we are allowed to, and so we had to write it in that manner, just to be, to be correct.
And I will say, too, that, not necessarily defending the legislation, but there are some jurisdictions, we are blessed to not be one of those, there are some jurisdictions that do some unbelievably arbitrary, you know, code writing, or they did it in the past and never undid it, so it does exist and make things, can make things a nightmare in some places, so it's, you know, it also helps development, right? So none of the, it's all striking a balance on these things, it's really, you know, it never happens like that, just, you know, go one way, and then we got to go back the other a little bit, so. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion for a recommendation to the city council, which I believe can be found on page 10, and I'm told will encompass all this, right?
Yeah, unless you wanted to pull something out, and, you know, we can do that, too.
I don't see any need to do that.
Well, I'll move that the planning commission accept a listed finding and forward the ordinance amendment to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Heisler, second by Geneser. Can I get a roll call vote?
Geneser? Aye. Weller?
Aye.
Bafki?
Because I believe in the staff's ability to understand the intent, I'm going to say aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
All right. Thank you again, gentlemen. All right, moving on, approval of the previous minutes. I get a motion to do that?
Sure, I'll move to approve the previous minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Heisler, second by Weller, and I do not need a roll call for that, right?
Correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any old business?
Nothing for old.
Any new?
I just, we have a couple items for next month, and we're kind of getting toward the end of final push for construction season, so I think we'll, we'll get through those, and then probably a few comprehensive plan related things as we get toward the end of the year when it starts getting cold.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Weller, second by Geneser. All in favor, right, or do I need to ask? Yeah.
Aye.
Favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.